Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, June 2, 2025. Happy Pride Month, and this meeting is called to order. We will have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki. Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here.
I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Onuki.
Support.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Wendy is excused. Moving on, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. It is now time for a community update from the South Haven Area Community Foundation. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You can speak in the microphone.
I can't figure out who to address. There's so many people out here.
You face us because the TV's got.
Ah, gotcha. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council folks, as well as all the community members, and including our grantees. We thank you for the opportunity to come and present to the city. My name is Jim Markku, and I am one of the founding members of the independent South Haven Community Foundation. I've also been past president, and I'm kind of the lifelong executive director, I guess. At least I have been since we started. I'm going to keep this kind of short because I've been asked to, and in a minute, we're going to actually ask the awardees that we have to stand. And when we do, please, no applause, until the very, very end. I'd be remiss if I didn't make a comment or two about the foundation and what we're doing. We became independent in 2005. We were a geographic affiliate of the Kalamazoo Community Foundation, and back then, we were lucky to have $10,000, $12,000 to be able to distribute. And this year, we're distributing, we got to pick, $219,618. And since we've been independent, we are, have actually surpassed now with tonight, a million dollars. And this money has gone right back out into the community. You know, we raise money, we invest it, and it's really not us, but these people that are in the audience, all of our 501(c)(3) partners, who are doing the great things in our community to make it a better place to live, work, and play. So we want to thank each and every one of you for what you do. Continue to keep doing it. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and read off all the awardees, if that's okay. South Haven Area Emergency Services. Hospice Care of Southwest Michigan. Yeah, please stand, folks. Southwest Michigan United Way. South Haven Public School Music Boosters. Van Buren Youth Initiative. Beautify Pullman. Collective Mess. Al Van Humane Society. Liberty Hyde Bailey Museum. Our Town Players. Foundry Hall. South Haven Region Business Hub. South Haven Center for the Arts. The Mitten Museum. South Haven Boating Foundation. South Haven Speaker Series. I missed that. We had a chuckle?
Someone stood up twice.
I know it wasn't me. Michigan Flywheelers. South Haven Theater Series. The South Haven Steelheaders. We Care Resource Center. Pretty Incorporated. South Haven Performance Series. And People Helping People. There are others as well that our Youth Advisory Council, I'm not going to read them for the most part, most of them are part of the school system. I will tell you this, that, and you can see in our name, it says "South Haven Area." We have expanded our reach. In fact, there are awardees here from Covert, Bangor, and Pullman. So we welcome you to the party, and we hope, as we continue to grow, that we're able to touch our community at large, basically everywhere that the South Haven School District reaches into. How come nobody's standing? Stand one more time. They told me I had five minutes. I think I did pretty good.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we thought they were all here to see us.
It is now time for public comment for items on the agenda, excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Somehow, I never envisioned myself standing on this side of the podium. My name is Eddie Polk, and I live at 814 Indiana Avenue, and I'm running for the City Council seat for Ward 1. My family and I have lived the city residence since 1995, when we bought our house. So we've been long-term residents of the city of South Haven. I'm currently employed at Palisades Nuclear Plant, where I've worked for previous employees. I've worked there for a little over 40 years, first beginning with Consumers Power, then Consumers Energy, then CMS, now Holtech International. Okay, as a lifelong resident and property owner, I have a vested interest in this community, in the social and economic growth and development of our community. As a council member, I will strive to listen, research, learn, and support those actions and decisions which best serve the needs, which enhance and promote the social and economic growth of our community. Affordable housing, short-term rentals, parking, new developments, commerce, a diverse and inclusive community are just a few of the areas which I am confident that I can help to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Flack, 253 Hubbard Street. I'll follow Eddie's cue. I'm also running for City Council in Ward 3. I'm currently unopposed, and I will be unopposed. And I just want to share a little bit about the election, number one, because a lot of people are asking questions when I go door-to-door about the when and how, and also just a little bit about me and my background. I'm not from here, and that seems to be an issue out there in space, so I want to talk a little bit about my background and make sure people have access to me and my page so they can understand what's going on, so.
Will you be talking about anything on the agenda?
I will not, Annie. I was going to go later, but I saw Eddie went, so I thought I would.
Oh, he's on the agenda.
Oh, he is. I'm sorry. Then I will come back later on. My apologies.
Thank you. No problem. Anybody else?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. So can we talk about the campaign, upcoming campaign?
If it's on the agenda.
Is the campaign on the agenda?
What are you going to discuss?
Can I talk about the campaign? That's all I want.
The campaign's not on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Lisa Krupiarz, 561 Indiana Avenue. I'm going to be talking about two items on the agenda this evening. Agenda item number 12 under New Business regarding the non-permanent signs. This is such a disappointing outcome for residents after so much time and effort has been dedicated to this topic. Residents have repeatedly asked for the clunky wood signs advertising short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods to be removed, or limited for the time period of time they are displayed. In this current revision of the non-permanent sign ordinance, the definition of non-permanent sign has been rewritten to specifically include this type of sign. I am literally stunned by this, and many of us are terribly disappointed that these signs could be allowed and accommodated going forward if City Council votes to approve this new ordinance as it's written. Also, please remember, several years ago, when local short-term rental property management companies were displaying signs year-round, a beloved local resident took it upon herself to personally contact these companies, requesting short-term rental advertising signs to be posted only during tourist seasons, and most companies complied and respected residents' wishes. But two companies, to my knowledge, have refused to respect residents' wishes, posting their permanent-looking signs year-round, 24/7, 365 days, disrespecting residents and the character of our neighborhoods. Please do not vote to approve this ordinance. Agenda item number 13 under New Business regarding appointment of individuals to respective boards and commissions. Michigan state law indicates the equitable representation from the overall community of those who serve on boards and commissions. Considering this, please do not approve the suggested appointments for ZBA as recommended on this agenda. Wards 1, 2, and 3 should be represented equally, two representatives from each ward. Also, Steve Runkel is already serving on the Construction Board of Appeals through 2027, and Hayes Greer is serving on the Harbor Commission, also through 2027. It does appear there have been some arrangements for Hayes Greer to resign from the Harbor Commission, so he can be appointed to ZBA. Please remember, Hayes and Ashley Greer owned 77 Clinton when numerous mistakes were made by the city in zoning to approve the illegal home expansion over their garage. The Greers did not adjust their plans when it was discovered. Their construction plans should never have been approved. Their stubborn resistance disrespected and caused great emotional distress to the surrounding neighbors, and ultimately resulted in a $78.5,000 payout by the city to the Greers as a legal It clearly appears this should be a massive conflict of interest to appoint Hayes Greer to ZBA, the ultimate past violations and disrespect of zoning ordinance and ZBA regulations by the Greers, and the mayor wants to appoint him to this board. For clarification, these are the qualified applicants and current members who could comprise an equitable representation on ZBA. Ward 1, Chris Bellicky, who is currently on ZBA; myself, Lisa Krupiarz, as the alternate; Ward 2, Don Bemis, thank you, I see it; Ward 2, Don Bemis, Brandy Coulom; Ward 3, Kurt Bitman and Amy Nichols as the alternate. Please consider these individuals for ZBA appointment in order to continue to welcome newly identified residents who want to serve our community while also maintaining the integrity.
Give one minute.
Thank you. While also maintaining the integrity and experience this board has always represented. Thank you.
Amy Nichols, 541 Woodbridge Circle. While I appreciate Lisa's support as an alternate, I'm not up as an alternate, I'm up as an actual member, and I do feel that my five years of experience on zoning has actually qualified me for that. I do also feel that maybe my age is not an issue, and my experience is much more important than my age. So while I appreciate being here in front of this board, I didn't expect to have to defend myself tonight, but if I need to, I can. I have a ton of experience, and I know what was implemented in the master plan, I know what was implemented as far as Planning Commission knows what's going on, so I would just appreciate your support when it comes to my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through G?
I move to approve items A through G.
Second.
Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Old Business. Number nine, the City Council will be asked to consider approval of the following resolutions related to the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. A, Resolution 2025-20, a resolution adopting the 2025-26 fiscal year budget for component unit funds of the city of South Haven, Michigan. Resolution 2025-21, a resolution adopting the 2025-26 fiscal year budget for general special revenue, debt service, capital projects, and fiduciary funds of the city of South Haven, Michigan. C, Resolution 2025-22, a resolution adopting the 2025-26 fiscal year budget for enterprise and internal service funds of the city of South Haven. D, Resolution 2025-23, a resolution setting the 2025 property tax millage. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a routine business for us. Happy year. This is, our adoption period is the first meeting of the month, of June. So we have the same resolutions that we've brought to yours past, as well as the updated 2025 millage tax, property tax millage. This was the document that we shared at our last meeting, showing that we are going to be experiencing a rollback. We've had lots of meetings, we've had lots of priority setting and discussion with city staff. I'm hoping at this point, there are no more questions, and we're ready to proceed for adoption.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 2025-20, as read by the mayor. Resolution 2025-21, as read by the mayor. Resolution 25-22, as read by the mayor. And Resolution 2025-23, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motions pass. Moving on, number 10, the City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding an amendment to a 425 agreement with the South Haven Charter Township. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. We have received a request to remove a parcel from the 425 agreement that we had done with the township. We took in a number of parcels, and for a period of time, 10 years, we're going to have them within the city and utilize the city as the single point of contact for development, for rehabilitation, of course, cleaning up that corridor as well. This was a major corridor, this is one of our entry points into the city, and the thought was to help utilize city tools to beautify that area and get it primed for redevelopment. This parcel is located 09160 M140. This is the Pacina parcel. Mr. Pacina has requested to be removed from this and give him, and transferred back to the township. City staff have some concerns, this would leave like an island of township left, as an island, rather, and the idea also is that the only other removal that we've done was for the Samaritas property. That was a housing development that is looked at by both the city and the township as a necessary housing development, and the township's rules were a bit more amenable than the city's rules were going to be. So here we have this request. I know that city staff have had a look at this. Our staff report is recommending not to have this removed, but to continue with the district. But I'm here to answer any questions. I know staff have looked at this.
I would move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Was there a second?
I support it.
Okay. The public hearing is, are all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
The public hearing is now open. If anyone in the audience has questions or comments about this project, you can step forward and ask questions or give your comments.
Hi, my name's Wayne Pacina, and I am the property owner in question. I'd like to thank everyone for your attention and for looking at this for me. I'm a full-time resident since 2018 in South Haven. I retired here in 2023. Little background on the project, I think there's a lot of people don't even know what it is. It's a little complicated, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, that's not my business, but I thought I would read a little statement as to where I stand on this. I bought the property at 9160 M140 in June of 2021. It is a half-acre parcel just north, excuse me, of the Grace Chemical Plant entrance. It was located in the township when I closed on the property. I had plans for two storage buildings, which are allowed under township zoning. The 425 plan, which was to promote revitalization of the M140 corridor north of the Blue Star Highway, was under consideration in 2021, but all notices regarding the proposal were sent to the previous landowner and not to me, thereby giving me no time to remonstrate against being in the plan at the time, which would change my zoning to be 2, not allowing a storage building. I received no formal notice of the plan until December 2021, and then it was only via emails. Efforts by me to Griffin Graham, the Assistant City Manager at that time, to not be included in the plan were futile, as he said it was too late to remove any property from the 425 plan agreement. I got my building permits for two storage buildings on 122821 from the township, three days before the plan took effect. The 425 plan took effect on 1122. I built the first building in 2022 under township inspections. I put the second on hold due to high material costs. The move of my property to the city with the change in zoning to B2 now makes my second building impossible, thereby greatly reducing the use and therefore the value of my property. My property should never have been included in the plan in the first place, as being approved and permitted in the township before the plan took effect. My property was no different than the other properties, and there are many in the corridor that were allowed to remain in the township. When I asked the reason for that, I really did never got an answer from Mr. Graham. When I was told moving was not possible by Griffin Graham, I figured to just get a variance when I did my second building, which I assume the city would not want to set that precedent of a storage building variance in a B2 district.
You have one minute.
But now seeing that the parcel at 8729 M140 is being moved out of the plan and back to the township tells me that it is possible to change the plan, especially when a zoning issue is the case preventing construction of something. Thank you.
Kate, do you have any response to that that can help us?
Yeah, I would say that we did our notifications as was required. I understand Mr. Pacina's concerns, and he's brought them forward. At this point, this city is holding a public hearing on this. If this is approved, then it would go to the township, and they would also have to have a public hearing and do a similar process. Both entities would have to approve the removal to go back to the township. This was a corridor that needs some assistance, it needs some revitalization. We did install, or we did form a commercial rehab for this area, so this is additional tools that we have been, that we've got utilized, that we can utilize for this area. So I think at this point, I understand Mr. Pacina's concerns, and I guess I defer if there's anything from zoning or legal if they want to chip in.
I would also state that the B2, which the site is currently zoned, is a general business district, and I think at the time, I wasn't with the city, but based on the meeting minutes that I've read, the city spent quite a bit of time considering the proper zoning for that corridor, and really decided that B2 was the most appropriate use. There are general business uses that are allowed there, everything from, you know, retail to other types of professional offices, and I think quite a lot of time and effort was spent. We've been doing a lot of code enforcement in that corridor. Having it in the city limits allows kind of a one-stop shop for development and all of the associated things that go along with development, not just planning and zoning, but any financial incentives, like I said, code enforcement. And from a staff perspective, it's really a disadvantage to see this parcel be reverted to the township so quickly.
Does this, how does this project enhance or promote the revitalization of the M140 corridor?
I think that's a value judgment. You know, right now, the proposal is additional storage bins, the city, or storage barns. The city does not permit storage units in the B2 district. We have those in our industrial districts, and so the B2 really is designed for businesses that are aimed at job growth and employment.
Does this project create jobs?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there any information that leads us to believe that we need more storage spaces?
I've not conducted any kind of study, so I really hesitate to say for certain, one way or the other.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
I've done a little research, and although storage spaces may not be required, although it's kind of hard to find one when you need one, storage space for like a small business or a contractor who has maybe has a couple vehicles, that's what the building in front that has yet to be built was designed for, initially going to be designed for, because it's the only thing that allows the parking. If it's B2, that total piece of ground in front of my building is worthless, because there's not enough parking for anything I would do there in B2. So it renders my parcel worth a lot less. So it renders my parcel worth a lot less money. I also would like to make the comment that if you want to revitalize the corridor, why were all these existing businesses carved out and left in the township? If you want to make the whole thing look great, same rules, same everything for everybody on the corridor, why wouldn't you just do the whole thing? So all those existing businesses were carved out. Couple auto parts stores, a flower shop, they stayed in the township. So I find that interesting and a little weird. If it's about revitalizing the corridor, same set of rules. I mean, I'm all for making things beautiful, and I keep my grass cut, and I planted some trees, and I try to make everything look nice. And you've got one property here that's in the township and one in the city, and all of a sudden, the township's gonna not say anything, and the city might tell that guy, you need to plant some extra trees. It just doesn't make any sense to me to have this patchwork. You know, if it's about the corridor, make it the corridor. And I find that a little discriminatory, actually. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
Mary.
I do have some comments. And Mr. Pacina, could you come back? I have one quick question. So the second storage unit was going to be in front of the one that did get built?
Yes.
And if I understood correctly, you had permits from the township
Yes.
for both buildings
Yes.
before this took effect?
Yes.
Thank you. So, and Kate, would you mind pulling up or somebody pulling up the zoning map that's on the city's website? Because I think a picture is worth a thousand words. And it shows what, how cookie cutter type it is for the 425 agreement. And if you look at the properties immediately adjacent to Mr. Pacina's property, it's actually General Industrial One. And he has, if I'm correct, he has a little square right there. And so I do appreciate all the time that staff spent on identifying how to zone it. But it does seem a little disjointed, especially under these facts with regard to the timing of the sale, the timing of the 425 agreement, and most importantly, the issuance of the building permits under the township, which would have allowed it. And by the zoning of that small, that one single parcel, the way it is, it makes the previously lawfully conforming storage unit lawfully non-conforming. And also in looking at the B2 uses by right, it allows sales and distribution facilities, but it does not allow a storage facility. And they're both big boxes. So I am a little concerned that I would support this going back to the township for that, for those, for at least those reasons. Because it, especially in light of the permits having been granted by the township before the 425 became effective, if that is accurate.
Does anyone else have a question?
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Oh.
I move to close the public hearing.
Well, I.
We can still continue our discussion.
Well, before, I've been cut off, so I want to make sure that I can.
Are you done?
Well, I said, I asked, is the effective date, the 112022, can, is that confirmed such that the building permits from the township were issued before the effective date of the 425?
I'm unsure as to the dates, but as if we're talking vested rights, simply the issuance of a permit is not a sufficient step towards vesting a right which would require substantial construction. So while perhaps a policy consideration or a factor that this council may choose to consider, it's not one that I'm concerned about from legal's perspective.
Right, it's really more towards the policy aspect. And for allowing him to remove it. Can you pull that map up?
I have, this is going to take some time. I thought the map was in our packet.
No, not the zoning map, to show the coloring of the parcels immediately adjacent.
I'm going to have to get this all started, so it's going to take a bit to warm up and get going.
I think that's all I had to say.
There's a motion to close.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose. The hearing is closed. Okay. Any motion, any more discussion?
Well, I would move to, I'm trying to find it on the. I would move to allow Mr. Pacina's request to remove his parcel from the 425 agreement boundaries.
So before we go into a second on that, I did put in the resolution. There's a draft in there. If council is looking forward to approve that, it's got a second amendment to the 425 agreement. The next resolution number would be 24.
Okay, there's a motion.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Can I amend that
Sure.
to approve Resolution 2025-24, a resolution to approve a second amendment to the Development Cooperation 425 Agreement?
Okay. So new motion.
There's a motion to amend.
Pass.
Well, no, so we need to vote on the amendment.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Absolutely. Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki, or I'm sorry. Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries for the amendment.
Okay. Now.
The original motion.
The original motion.
Okay. Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
That is three to three. Motion fails.
Fails. Okay. So now do we move on? Because there was no action.
Yes, Mayor, you move on.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, number 11. The city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. A, Special Event 2025-30 Stellar Steppers Sunrise to Sunset Walk for Bronson and NICU to be held on September 8, 2025, beginning at the Calhaven Trail, Kalamazoo Trailhead at sunrise, ending at South Haven North Beach by sunset. And B, Special Event 2025-31 and 2025-32 Low Light Music Festival to be held on July 11, beginning at 4 and ending at 9:30 p.m. and August 29, beginning at 3:30 p.m. and ending at 8:30 p.m. Is there a motion to approve these?
I would move to approve Special Event 2025-30 Stellar Steppers Sunrise to Sunset Walk for Bronson and NICU to be held September 8, 2025, beginning at the Calhaven Trail, Kalamazoo Trailhead at sunrise and ending in South Haven North Beach at sunset.
Are you doing one at a time?
I just had to say Stellar Steppers Sunrise to Sunset.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion, and it was seconded. All in favor of number A, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do you want to move on to B?
I move to approve Special Event 2025-31 and 2025-32 Low Light Music Festival to be held on July 11, beginning at 4 and ending at 9:30 p.m. and August 29, beginning at 3:30 p.m. and ending at 8:30 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes.
Can we ask Kate a question?
Go ahead.
While I read the packet, I don't know if everyone has, could you shed a little light on these two new events?
Yes, these are two new events. The one from Sunrise to Sunset, the Stellar Steppers, that will be an all-day thing, it sounds like. I mean, that's 37 miles they'll be walking from Kalamazoo to here. This is for a good cause, to raise awareness, and I think some fundraising for the Bronson Neonative Intensive Care Unit. The other one is Foundry Hall is looking to bring some evening concerts to Riverfront Park. And they had a form of this last year at Stanley Johnston. This year, they'd like to be at Riverfront Park, and they've got two dates.
Okay. Glad we passed them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to discuss and consider a motion to introduce the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments regarding non-permanent signs as recommended by the Planning Commission. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have zoning and legal here. This was recommended, or the city council asked the Planning Commission to have a look at non-permanent and permanent signage. There's been quite a discussion at the Planning Commission level because here we're regulating signage, and there's always a First Amendment issue and some considerations with that. The city updated its signed ordinance some time ago to comply with the Albert case, I'm sorry, the Gilbert case, which needs to, which requires content neutrality when you're dealing with signs. I'd like to turn this over to Dave and Kelly because they were part of the Planning Commission's very robust discussion. We do have some proposed changes in here. Granted, it's not going as far as some people would like it to do, but unfortunately, we have to kind of walk the line with being content neutral and making sure our suggested changes are within the law. So with that, Dave and Kelly?
Sure, thanks, Kate. As Kate mentioned, the sign ordinance was recently opened up minorly just to consider some amendments to the temporary or non-permanent sign provisions. We, with the Planning Commission, considered heavily the Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court case and First Amendment rights. And so as I, I think you may all remember, while the city was rewriting its zoning ordinance, several comments came in regarding the temporary sign regulations, both from members of the public and from business owners who felt that maybe some changes were warranted. And after really thorough discussion over the course of several months, the Planning Commission has proposed this text for your consideration. So as you have seen in your packet, I'll give you just a brief overview of what the text amendments will do. They will add a definition for permanent sign, which the ordinance previously did not have, and minimally amend the definition of non-permanent sign to include a list of examples of non-permanent signs, just to help provide staff some clarity for enforcement. Non-permanent signs will be regulated now by district rather than by use on the lot, which helps create more uniform zoning districts, and again, helps with consistent code enforcement. We are removing time limits for placement of non-permanent signs in the business districts. Business districts, right now, for our business districts, we allow one sign at a time to be placed for, you know, 30 days, up to four times a year. It gets kind of convoluted for code enforcement to figure out who's got what sign placed when. And so this will really even things out between the business districts and the residential districts. And then we will regulate non-permanent signs with a cap on total square footage per lot, with a size limit on individual signs, rather than having a hard cap on the total number of signs that can be placed. There are also some minor errors in the definitions, things that were cleaned up. So what these regulations will not do is prohibit short-term rental signs. And this is something that was discussed at length at the Planning Commission during several meetings. They thoroughly debated several options and ultimately decided that all of them had unsatisfactory drawbacks, and none of the options were found to be acceptable. And so the group decision is what you have in your packet tonight, just with the thought that the government has the right to regulate signage, but also property owners are entitled to free speech. And so that is what we have for your consideration this evening. Again, non-permanent signs only, not permanent signs.
Thank you. Any questions? Joe?
Yeah, so I want to make sure I understand what a non-permanent sign is. It says, intended to be used for an indefinite period of time. The residents in residential communities are concerned because some of these short-term rental signs are, in fact, up for an indefinite period of time, some of them a couple of years. So does that disqualify them as a non-permanent sign?
So Councilmember Reeser, I believe right now you're referring to some amendments that I believe Councilmember Hosley will be providing.
Can I just say, this was presented to us at 6:51 tonight. Go ahead.
The current definition as recommended by the Planning Commission reads, non-permanent sign, any sign not permanently affixed to the ground or building that is capable of being easily moved from place to place. Examples of non-permanent signs include, but are not limited to, yard signs on metal stakes, banners, A-frame signs, feather signs, and signs with wooden or metal supports that are placed into the ground with or without a permanent foundation. As was discussed at the Planning Commission, the term permanent and non-permanent are used to maintain some consistency with the language that was already in the zoning ordinance. But as we discussed at Planning Commission, it may be more helpful to think of them as portable versus non-portable signs. Because that is really the essence of the distinction. And as some members of the public have expressed, and as I believe was really the catalyst for Planning Commission taking it up at the direction of council, was some individuals' concern regarding the short-term rental signs. But as was thoroughly discussed at the Planning Commission level, trying to call out and regulate or prohibit short-term rental signs amounts to content-based discrimination and is going to land you in hot water regarding constitutional issues. So when Kelly said there were no acceptable solutions, if she wasn't speaking just to practicalities regarding enforcement or policy, she was also speaking to, at those meetings, legal being there and us saying, don't, please don't do that. So there's legal considerations at play here largely. And I understand that that may be a disappointment to some folks, but we're beholden to the law. And as of now, the law would preclude us from making that content-based distinction between the short-term rental signs and other signs on a property. Yes, sir?
So one other question tied into that. So if I heard you right, portability is an issue. If it's portable, then it can be non-permanent.
Right. The definition of non-permanent, the essence of that definition, I think, is really getting at portability. And there was discussion at the Planning Commission level of whether or not it should just be changed to a non-portable sign and portable signs. And the Planning Commission said, we'll just leave it the way it is. But the general understanding was what we're really getting at is the portability. And one of the reasons for that is intent regarding how permanent a sign can be is hard to decipher. It's just, it's somewhat amorphous. Now, there's, if you argue it on the extremes, it's pretty obvious. If something is cemented in there, it's very clear that they intended it to be permanent. But it's less clear in some of these other contexts. For example, some of these short-term rental signs that are at issue, one could leave them in there and intend them to be seasonal, or they could leave it in there and intend it to be of a more permanent nature. There was also consideration, as Kelly mentioned, some of the practical issues with enforcement that Planning Commission really discussed in depth, understanding that if you tailor an ordinance to such an extreme degree, it becomes very easy for a property owner to say, okay, well, fine. That's easy, it's easy for me, it's easy enough for me to get around that by simply modifying how I place my sign or how I do something. So it's kind of along the lines of what we've discussed before. When you're doing generally applicable legislation, you're going for that 80% solution, understanding that there may be some weird cases around the edges that are just, they're going to be left to the zoning administrator's discretion, or we're not going to be able to capture. And on some level, I encourage council to be okay with that.
Mary?
Yes. First, I want to thank the Planning Commission and legal counsel and zoning administrator for all their work on this. And the. for all their work on this and the discussions that we've had on this. And yes, what is before you is what the majority of planning commission members supported, but the vote was not unanimous. Page 100 shows that. Bob Sherman, who's in the audience, Mike Campbell, and I did not support what was going forward. And Planning Commissioner Sherman, I thought, was quite eloquent discussing the lack of clarity. And, you know, I encourage you to look at page 109 of the agenda packet, which has the draft minutes. Key points were not using the term in the definition. And also, challenging, you know, raising the concern that "easily" is very subjective. And I think that is where we got into signs that are on approximately three-to-four-inch diameter wooden posts. So it's content neutral. I am just saying, three-to-four-inch posts, that you would not get in the land without a post digger. They may not have cement at the bottom, and a person may be able to lift them out, but not just the ordinary person would not easily be able to lift them and move them. And I think that is one concern with "easily." Also, although not, although permanent sign was added, again, it uses its, the definition, the term is in the definition, and there was questions about what is, what exactly does a fixed mean? And so, we did have questions, and there were sample ordinances from which we could try to piece something together when we were, when we did not find the proposal acceptable, but those changes to the definitions were not found acceptable, trying to go, you know, with little time at the meeting itself. But what I came with, and yes, I did provide it right before the meeting, because I have been thinking about how to word it over the entire weekend, and I kept thinking of a different way to word it. But this is for introduction, so that at least we could talk about it. It is then out in the open, so the public could actually have it in their, at their availability, and could comment on it at least at the next meeting, at which it would be up for a vote. So, although it was presented right before this meeting, it is presented at a time that allows much discussion. And that should not be surprising, based on the discussion of the planning commission. And I did very much appreciate the work of, or the acceptance of the planning commission with modification of what would be regulated and which zone RM1 was moved to residential. But with the lack of clarity perceived by some of us on the planning commission, I wanted to bring forward an alternative for discussion. And the government does have a right to regulate time, place, and manner, and many of the examples had use without a shovel or other tool. And so, something that is portable, would be temporary, would definitely be something without a tool. So, the amendment that I had proposed is that non-permanent, and I'll just read it as proposed, not providing the strikes or anything. "Non-permanent sign, any sign that is not intended to be used for an indefinite period of time in a specific location, that can be placed in the ground or on a building without the use of any tool, and that can be moved by hand without the use of any tool." Examples of non-permanent signs include, but are not limited to, yard signs on metal stakes, banners, A-frame signs, A-frame signs, and feather signs. I was, I do propose that signs on wooden or metal supports that are placed in the ground without a permanent foundation be stricken, because it's too vague. And it, it doesn't add clarity. It provides no more clarity than what we've got now, which is why we were revisiting this. And then, permanent sign would be any sign intended to be used for an indefinite period of time and affixed to the ground or a building using any tool. And to me, those definitions are much more clear, much less open to interpretation for creative interpretation, where signs in residential areas are on three-to-four-inch wooden stakes or poles, really, they're not stakes, and are there 24/7, 365. And I believe that those should not be permanent signs, regardless of what message. This is message, content neutral.
You've mentioned this before, but motions and voting does not have to be unanimous.
Correct, but it also-
I'm talking, please?
Point of order, you-
Mary, I'm talking, I'm talking.
Personal point of order, personal point of order.
There is no personal point of order.
Yes, there is. Personal point of order, I ask for support.
Okay, moving on. George, could you explain to Mary, again, what her job is as the city council-
Personal point of order, I-
Commission.
Personal point of order, I provided what the planning commission recommended, and I provided what was discussed. I have met what the city council member liaison to planning commission is.
I'm speaking, George, please, can you help her out here?
Well, I guess I'll just say that there seems to be a pattern going on here. When our liaison to the planning commission doesn't get her desired outcome out of the planning commission, she comes to the city council with a different version, and instead of us going with the experts and the planning commission, we're supposed to go with, in what Member Hosley has come up with, which, if she thinks it's clear, I don't think so, because anytime you use the word "intended," there is, there is no way to, to regulate intent, in my opinion. And so, I would say, you were not doing a fair effort in presenting the majority opinion, and instead, we're doing a lot more effort on the minority opinion from the planning commission, which I don't think is appropriate. And I don't think we, on city council, should be going with something that is not approved by the planning commission.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote?
We need a motion.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments regarding non-permanent signs as recommended by the planning commission.
Support.
Could we, any more discussion? Joe?
I understand both sides of this, I really do. I'm going to go back to a little different part of this issue. In my humble opinion, the people in this town, the residents, find it frustrating to have a business on their residential street, that being a short-term rental, and they've been defined as businesses. While that's not enough now, now we have to have, in some cases, what most people would call a business commercial sign that appears on a practical perspective to be a permanent sign. They are there for years, and I defy anyone to pull it up and move it by hand. That would be very difficult. So here we have a business on a residential street that the residents are asked to accept. Now they have to accept commercial signs for that commercial property on a residential street. I don't know how you would do it as a lawyer, and I'm not going to get in between the two of you what's right and what's wrong. I, I'll get to that in a second. But this just feels, this, more than feels, this seems wrong to me. And as our legal, as our city attorney, it would just seem like you could find a way to put more bite into this, to stop commercial signs on residential streets.
This issue was debated thoroughly at planning commission, to include, understanding that that was the concern by some residents, to try and figure out what is an appropriate way to do that. And you end up running into the same issue of, you are doing content-based discrimination, and you will not withstand strict scrutiny. So while I understand the frustrations, I, those frustrations should be taken up with the United States Supreme Court.
So, when, can I just say, Joe, I don't understand this, I'm not trying to debate you. So, when it's a sign for a commercial business, meaning a short-term rental, that sign then becomes content? No.
No, so-
I'm trying to understand how content comes in here.
Right, because you're making the distinction between different types of commercial speech. So, commercial speech that is content neutral, i.e. doesn't get to what it is about, making the distinction between perhaps a STR sign, or a realtor's sign, or a garage sale sign. If you're content neutral, it's subject to intermediate scrutiny, which is why we've been able to say, "On premise, sign it." On premise, commercial speech, we're not allowing, you know, even though the size of these, we're not allowing off-premise, commercial speech. So you can't have a sign for commercial speech that's not occur, for the commercial activity that's not occurring on that property. But the minute you try to start distinguishing between, say, "Well, we're okay with a realtor's sign, but we're not okay with a short-term rental sign," you're, you are distinguishing between different types of commercial speech, which is content-based discrimination, which leads you to strict scrutiny. Now, I understand the frustrations, because up until Reed versus Gilbert, many municipalities did, in fact, make those distinctions. And that is generally, what a lot of people were used to was, I have a distinction between a yard sale sign, a realtor's sign, a short-term rental sign. That was common, but the rules changed when Reed v. Gilbert came out, and right now, our office's goal is to try and make sure that, while not just practical, that these, these ordinances, these changes will withstand constitutional muster, because the last thing we want to do is put the city in a position to where now we're open to all sorts of First Amendment claims.
Okay, so, I understand that. Then, tied in with that is the amount of time, permanent versus temporary. Realtor's signs stay up as long as it takes to sell a home, anywhere from two days to several months. But the signs that we're all talking about, that we all know exist, are up for years. Are we able to craft this in a way to stop longevity, or is that not permissible either? I'm asking from a legal standpoint.
And I think all the permutations of what you're getting at, and Kelly, correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I, I think the planning commission really went down all those rabbit trails, and came to the conclusion that this is the best course of action. Do you have anything to add to that, Kelly?
No, I, I agree with what you're saying. The planning commission did consider temporal limits and, and those types of things, and at every turn, there was some other consequence as a result of that action that the planning commission found to be unacceptable. And in some cases, it was unconstitutional, in some cases, it meant the need to protect free speech by allowing more permanent signs, which the planning commission felt wasn't a good solution, because the goal was to reduce the number of signs, not to provide more.
And for, to your, your question specifically, if we regulate the, the timing issue, there's, there's a question of whether that is narrowly tailored, because the governmental interests at issue are consistent throughout. So, how, if we're concerned necessarily for aesthetics or traffic, how is requiring them to take a sign down for a day, then put the sign back up, really, really addressing those concerns? And then additionally, because of how restrictive our permanent sign provisions are, we're running into the issue of other, other ample channels for communication. If we, if we were trying to broadly impose some sort of durational requirements on non-permanent signage. So, it's, it's very complicated, and it's convoluted, and, I mean, frankly, I had to spend some time kind of brushing up on it before we came out here tonight, because it is, it is a very messy question, both in, from a legal perspective and from a practical perspective. And like Kelly said, you change one thing, and it checks one block, but then you follow it out, and you're like, "Well, that's, that's just not going to work as a practical matter." So again, I'm not, this is, council's council, council's the boss, council can make amendments, depending on the amendments, we may have to go back to planning commission. But I do want to emphasize Kelly and Kate's comments, that multiple permutations, trying to address that very concern, were debated at the council, or, excuse me, at the planning commission level. And this is, the language before you is stuff, is, is language that the majority of the planning commission was satisfied with, legal was satisfied with, and I believe zoning was satisfied with.
Any more discussion?
Yep.
One more.
Go ahead.
Sorry to take so long.
That's great.
I do want to touch on the George and Mary issue. I feel a person such as Mary that's on the planning commission can, and I think for the most part, does represent the wishes of the planning committee, planning commission, and has said so. But I think with her intellect and her legal background, that there are times where she can take something and say, "Maybe I can make it better," and present it. Now, that may be frustrating to some people on city council. I'm just going to tell you from my perspective, I want to hear if there's a better mousetrap, if there's a better way of doing it. And I don't take it as a criticism or walking away from the planning commission. To make it clear, I think the planning commission did do a good job with this. I, when I spoke to Kate today, I made the comment that this is a very difficult, confusing thing, but I'll go back, and you explained it beautifully. But I'm looking at these residents, and I know what they're thinking. "Joe, are you, are you not going to defend our residential neighborhood and stop these signs?" And so, it sounds like I can't, but I want it to be known that I'm trying, and I believe, and it doesn't matter if it's Mary, or Letitia, or anybody else that comes up with an idea that maybe could try to stop these signs, I'm all for it. And so I don't think she's gone against the wishes of the planning commission. But you make a good point, if that was her intent. I don't think it is, and we don't have to vote on what she suggested.
I'm just saying, be very cautious about showing favoritism based on intellect and lauderies.
If I can't, if I can't side with someone with a better mousetrap, if I can't side with somebody that I think has a smart, better idea, then maybe I shouldn't be up here, because that is my job, to represent the residents, and listen to different perspectives, and do what I think is the best idea. And that does not go against the city council or the planning commission. It is me trying to vote or support what I think is best.
George?
So, th- this is just another example where the planning commission does their hard work, they send it to us, and we say, "No, we're smarter than you are, we have a better idea. I know you guys spent a lot of time on this, but we're going to not do what you want to do." I'm just, I don't know what to say. The planning commission are the experts. You may think we have a better mousetrap, but you're not an expert. Those guys are the experts. We should be listening to them and doing what they suggest, and not second-guessing them, and I'm just frustrated. That's it.
Mary?
First of all, so, at planning commission, I wear a planning commission hat. I do represent what, I did present what they did, I thank them for their effort. But on city council, I am wearing city council hat, and if my constituents are telling me something different, then I am beholden to them, and I must assert what I can, within my ability, to advance what they want. And what I am hearing is that signs on three-to-four-inch pieces of plywood are not temporary, are not non-permanent, and it's creative interpretation to make them that way. And that, I see your point about the intent, and that could actually be removed, but based on other discussions, and I don't believe that these examples were made, and that was the frustrating- that was the frustrating part with Planning Commission, is that alternatives were not presented to us. We had to come up with them. And that wasn't our job, that was legal's job, to come up with alternatives. And we specifically have said, for policy reasons, that a temporary sign, a non-permanent sign, should be temporary and easily moved. And as Mr. Sherman said, easily is very subjective and can lead to the incorrect result. I was going through exactly what was presented to Planning Commission, and one of the examples had moved by hand without the use of a shovel or other tools, and capable of standing on its own frame. And so that is what I had provided with regard to that it can be placed in the ground or on a building without the use of a tool, and that can be moved by hand without the use of any tool. That is much less subjective than what is here. I do not see, or I do not believe that there is a significant change in the definitions, and that's where the critical part is. And as Mr. Sherman said, you know, the definite, the term should not be in the definition if you can avoid it, and I agree with him. So that is why I came, I came up with another way to say it. And as policy setters, we can say, bring us a slightly different policy, a slightly different-worded ordinance that addresses the concerns we are hearing from our constituents that was not resolved as much as it could have been at planning.
Mr. Eberle, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To say that our office didn't provide options is-
I mean, I meant different draft languages.
Mary, we're not interrupting. Go ahead.
Thank you for that clarification. Our office provided language from 10 different ordinances, in-state, outstate, model ordinances for Planning Commission to consider. And the drafts that were provided by our office were based off the direction of the majority of the members of the Planning Commission. If individual Planning Commissioners were upset that their draft was not brought forward from our office, they should have got a majority to vote for it. We don't work for individual Planning Commissioners, just like we don't work for individual members of City Council. We work for the body we're in front of, and we take direction from those bodies, because it would be woefully inefficient for our office to be providing drafts based off every individual's personal predilections.
Thank you. Jeff?
My comment, I had many, but, we asked the Planning Commission to take this up, and unanimously, I think it was unanimously, we asked the Planning Commission to take this up. And they did just that. They worked very hard on this, worked a long time on this, and clearly, based on this conversation, it's not an easy topic.
Can you repeat that clearly? What?
This is not an easy topic to settle, that we've got a couple of different ways of looking at this. But what I'm hearing from my constituents is, we, not Planning Commission, take too long to get things done. And if you, if we try to change the goal, move the goalpost at the last minute, if we try to change the language at the last minute, then that is dragging, this is just dragging things out. If we are going to make these changes, would this have to go back to Planning Commission? Do they have to start over? And then we're getting no closer to getting anywhere with this sign ordinance changes. And while I certainly appreciate Mr. Sherman and Mr. Campbell, and Councilperson Hosley's efforts and thoughts, the vote was six to three, the majority spoke. And in a democracy, you don't always get things right, but you get a satisfactory answer. So I am happy to proceed with what the Planning Commission has put forth, because the majority has spoken.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, the City Council will be asked to consider a motion to appoint the following individuals to the respective boards and commissions, with terms beginning June 1st, 2025. We'll start with number one, Eric Cook to the Harbor Commission for a three-year term. Is there a motion?
I move to appoint Eric Cook to the Harbor Commission for a three-year term.
Support.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes. Number two, Eddie Polk to the Planning Commission for a four-year term.
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry, three-year term. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Eddie Polk to the Planning Commission for a three-year term.
Second.
Let's do a roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, with, never, um, Narine.
Roll call, please.
Mayor, may I?
Oh, go ahead.
In the staff memo, it explains that should council fail to make an appointment, those members currently serving would continue to serve as holdover members. In light of that, it may be beneficial to specify which of the holdover members are being replaced by the nomination, because I don't want to be in a situation where, perhaps, you know, for example, there's two open spots, and council settles on one nomination, then it becomes unclear which holdover member is being replaced.
Okay.
So, for example, nominate so-and-so to replace so-and-so.
Okay.
And Mr. Polk is continuing on Planning Commission.
So he would replace himself? Is that correct?
Then you could nominate him to replace himself, for a new term.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, there was a motion, and a second, and we're doing a roll call.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, number three, Paul Fitten to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, and he is replacing Amy Nichols.
I move to approve Paul Fitten to the Planning Commission for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, number four, Steve Runkel to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, and he is Chair of Zoning Board, and he will be replacing himself.
I move to approve Steve Runkel to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Onuki, or I'm sorry, Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
And Brown?
Yes.
Three to three, motion fails.
Okay. Next, number five, Brandy Cologne to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, and she is replacing herself.
I move to approve Brandy Cologne to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hosley?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And number six, Amy Nichols to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
Is she replacing anyone?
And she is replacing-
Tom.
Don.
Don.
Oh, yeah.
I move to approve Amy Nichols to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term.
Second.
Roll call-
Discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. So, there's been a lot of rhetoric about my comment with the word of young, and it's been completely taken out of context. So, under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, members shall be representative of the population distribution and the various interests present in the local government. And as part of this, and in the discussion last time, actually, the members that were being considered at that time did not include Ms. Nichols, included other people. And actually, the term young, in its intended form, was really not age-related, but being brought on with new ideas, developing our future leaders, and just bringing on new people. And we have one applicant who is also from Ward Three, Kurt Bitman. He is a 67-year resident with our area, a psychologist, has much experience with conflict resolution, something that our whole nation has right now. And we always say we want new people. And although Amy would be new to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and has experience from the Planning Commission with the Zoning Board of Appeals, again, I would like to see more people being brought forward and appointed who have not served on boards, so that we bring in differing opinions. And so I would strongly support Ms. Nichols as an alternate with her experience. She could step in at last minute and provide support where needed. But I would prefer to see Kurt Bitman appointed for the Ward Three representative, and towards that end, you know, looking at who is on these commissions. Ward Two is not well-represented, without Don Bemis there. And, you know, Ward Three has Mr. Gruber, but he's from Planning Commission.
Brandy Cologne, I believe she's in Ward Two.
That's what I said, yep.
Amy Nichols is in Ward Three.
Correct, and that's why I was saying, I would prefer to appoint someone who has not been on a board, and would support Kurt Bitman. And that is why, and I would better support Amy Nichols as an alternative, alternate, excuse me, for the ZBA, for those reasons.
Roll call, please.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, number seven, Hayes Greer to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate for a three-year term. So, Mr. Greer would be an alternate. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Hayes Greer to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate, three-year term.
Support.
Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, moving on to number eight, Don Bemis to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate for a three-year term.
I move to, make a motion to put Don Bemis on the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate for a three-year term.
Second.
I move to amend to put Don Bemis on the Zoning Board of Appeals to replace Steve Runkel. Do I have support?
There's no support?
Support.
Okay.
I'll support.
Letitia did. Any discussion?
Nothing more than I already said, about representing, having the Zoning Board of Appeal have sufficient members from Ward Two. Without him as an appointed member, Ward Two would only have two members, other, and that, by having him there, they would have three.
Right now-
Equal, as required by Michigan Zoning Enabling Act.
I-
Go ahead.
The Zoning Enabling says, "Members selected shall be representative of the population distribution and of the various interests present in the local unit of government. While a individual's location in a ward may be a factor, I do not think it is in any means a dispositive factor."
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion for Don Bemis, and it was seconded, right? Roll call, please. And this is to appoint him as an alternate for a three-year-
Have a motion to amend the original motion on the floor.
Oh, okay.
I think it may make sense procedurally, because the amendment is, it's not really an amendment, it's a completely different motion. So I think it would make sense procedurally to vote on the original motion to appoint Mr. Bemis as an alternate. And then should that motion fail, a member would be welcome to make a motion to appoint, to appoint him to replace Mr. Runkel.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
Reeser?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay.
I would move to nominate Don Bemis to replace Steve Runkel on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
One second. Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
That is, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Don't we have a second alternate? I don't think we did a second alternate.
We have one alternate, right?
We have one position open, yes, correct.
As an alternate.
No, I thought-
As an alternate, correct.
But we have two positions to fill.
You've, oh, I'm sorry, Hayes was not appointed. I apologize. So yes, two alternate positions are available.
So we still have one to do.
We'll have to bring it back next month, or next meeting.
Well-
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not my place to speak.
I would move to appoint Lisa Croupy Arts as an alternate to the ZBA.
I'd second that. Okay, any discussion? Let's have a roll call.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. Number 14, the City Council will be asked to receive an update from Public Works Director Dana Byrd. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, for having me. First, I just want to say, I want to thank the general public for calling us this morning and alerting us to a low water pressure issue in the community. That's something that we do appreciate when members of the public notice things that are a little bit off with their plumbing, and they can call us. It turned out to really not be much of an issue that was hard to resolve, and it did get resolved very quickly. But I did just want to thank folks for alerting us to that. It does help identify issues when folks see a sinkhole in a road, or a leaking water main, because we're out in the community, but a lot of times, people see that right before we do, and we appreciate those calls. As Kate had mentioned before, we're quite busy at Public Works. We've had a lot of requests come in this time of year with general construction, utility connections, fee requests, and that kind of thing. And it's been happening at the same time that we're a little short-staffed at the moment. So we have been working on cross-training and reorganizing the department a little bit to be a little more responsive to some of those requests. But I did just want to let people know, you know, we've acknowledged that we have a bit of a delayed response to folks, and we appreciate everybody's patience. We do try and prioritize the requests that we get to help folks out who are in the middle of construction. And that, unfortunately, that means that folks that aren't in the middle of construction or have a less urgent request, it takes us a little longer to respond to them. So, we do appreciate everyone's requests and the follow-ups that folks are making with us, because we do want to be responsive to everybody in the community. In my update report, I just had a few other items to highlight. You know, currently, our staff are working through a lot of reporting for Eagle and the Department of Great Lakes and Energy. We just passed our lab audit at the water filtration plant, as well as at the wastewater plant. Every so many years, they come through, we meet with staff from the regulators at Eagle. They go through all of our processes and procedures for sampling at the wastewater plant, as well as drinking water. And both plants did very well and passed those audits with the state. So, kudos to the team for their good work that they do, making sure that everything is in compliance on the system. We also are in the middle of reporting our consumer confidence on the drinking water system. So that's a mailing that will go out to the public in June, and we do that every year. And it just reports on our compliance with drinking water. So people can expect that, to see that in the mail coming soon. Five Star Energy Services is the company that's doing lead line replacements throughout town. We have about 55 services that have been replaced, and I just got a notice this morning that last week, they did 18 more. So, they're moving at a pretty rapid pace through the community, and we've received[1783.41] a lot of positive feedback from folks that are now coming into town this time of year, kind of wondering when we're going to get to their line. And so things have been working very well there. A couple of things that are happening in town this week, folks may have noticed that the intersection of Center and Eagle has been closed. There's a property there that's installing a fire service line, and unfortunately, that's going to take the majority of the week, and they have to do some pavement removal and boring to get that installed. So there will be a traffic detour in place for the week on that. And then there's other work being done down by the bridge, where a fiber company is putting up boring, boring a line underneath the river. And so we're going to have some pedestrian detours in place at times around the bridge. And yeah, so meetings we have coming up. Tomorrow, we have a Shasta meeting where we're going to be talking about rates and budget. And then we still need to schedule our BPU meeting coming up here in July to also look at some of those items. So happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I do.
Jeff?
Well, first, fortunately, the little kids at Lincoln didn't know how close they were to getting a day off because of that low water pressure, so they remained calm, not knowing that. But my question was, I sent an email, people over in the Ward Three neighborhood along Wilson were telling me that they've seen golf carts driving across that Hubbard wooden bridge. And I, you know, you're so busy, I wondered if you had time to look into that. They weren't mad, but they were wondering, is it structurally sound for that? Is it safe for that?
Yeah, so we did look into that, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. So we're in the process of putting up signs on either side of the bridge to say, no golf carts allowed, or, you know, non-motorized traffic only. The bridge is part of our sidewalk network, and those types of vehicles aren't allowed on that, so.
It's supposed to be there.
Yeah. Although you may be able to get across the bridge structurally, it's not part of where we want that kind of traffic, so.
I imagine someone walking the other way, that it wouldn't fit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, thanks.
Mary?
So I appreciate everyone's busy, but like Ms. Schubel's been waiting for a while. Do you have any idea? Because, I mean, when there's a big downpour, her home gets negatively affected.
Yeah, I mean, I'm aware of her concern, and we have, just have to get time to have somebody set up a meeting, go out there and see the specifics of what's going on. So I don't have a set timeframe for her, unfortunately.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
It is now time for public comments. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have up to five minutes.
Bob Sherman, 250 North Shore Drive, I had to get ahead of these politicians who may come up here and hog the microphone, I'm not sure. Just kidding, Eddie, and, but seriously, I wanted to shout out to the Parks Commission and to Aaron Prebe and his staff for the recent improvements at Packard Park. If you haven't been by there in a while, new pads were poured right by the entry to the restroom building, and some very large planters were placed there with some flowers, and that's attractive. And there's another pad that I think will be the site of a hose to wash off your sandy feet, so you don't track it into your car or other places. So that's very much appreciated, and good work by Aaron and all of his team. I'd like to suggest that the beach at Packard Park needs something else. We're pretty much all familiar, I think, with the mats. There are two mats on North Beach, and at least one, are there two, I've forgotten, on South Beach. That makes it enormously easier for folks with even the slightest bit of disability, or wheelchair, or strollers, or wagons pulling beach toys and so on, makes it enormously easier for folks to get to the beach. I'm going to suggest that the Packard Park beach is desperately in need of that. That beach, the angle to the beach is by far steeper than North or South Beach. And if you've ever watched folks walk up that hill at the end of the day, trudging, carrying small children, it really is in need of that improvement. There's a similar mat that you may be familiar with at Van Buren Park, State Beach. All those are wonderful and are really, really needed, in my opinion, at Packard Park. I did send an email earlier to Kate and to Aaron and to Mayor Brown that I hope will get shared, with a link to one supplier of that type mat, and I would strongly encourage that you consider that, and that Parks Department and so on will consider that as a significant improvement to Packard Park. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, for the council speeches, hi, everybody. Dave Flack, take two. I am running for Ward Three City Council on a post, and looking forward to it. I wanted to come in and share some information about the election. Folks, I've been going door-to-door, and there's a lot of questions around, when is it, what's the election all about? So there is a forum sponsored by the American Association of University Women coming up on July 15th at Lake Michigan College here in South Haven, which I think is a great event, so I'm encouraging as many people to get out there as possible to hear the candidates firsthand, hear the issues, hear the opportunities, and make an informed decision when it comes time to vote. Also, the primary is set for August the 5th, Tuesday, and then the general election is November the 4th, also a Tuesday. So as far as me and why I'm doing this, we've been coming here for 30 years, probably like everybody, or people who've grown up here. We bought a place here finally in 2019, and my wife Laura and I retired here last year full-time. So she teaches yoga over at Bronson Medical Center, and for the last year, I've been messing around with my honeybees and my boat and my guitars. But it's time to get back to work and do something more meaningful. And this place is special to us, and we are looking for a way to make a positive impact here. I know we're newer to the community, I get that, but we also understand its history fairly well, and understand that it doesn't need an overhaul, it needs really, really sound tweaking right now to get it to where its potential can go. So that's, that's what I'm aiming to do. We have two grown children, Alex and Christian, and we have two mini burna doodles, Bodie and Gus, that keep us busy at home. As far as my background, my education, I went to Michigan State University, I've got a business degree from there. I got an MBA from Eastern Michigan University. I spent 10 years in sales, working for a food company, calling on, you know, Meyer and Kroger and brands like that. And then I spent the last 25 years working at Ford Motor Company in different job roles. I started as a buyer, I was a Six Sigma Black Belt for several years, and I wound up in my last role being a Global Director of Powertrain Purchasing. So I had a global team, I had about 70 people who worked for me in basically all countries. And my view as a leader at Ford was always invert the organization. And I've always tried to do that everywhere I go, put myself at the bottom of it, and try to empower my people, try to eliminate roadblocks for them, and try to enable them to excel personally and professionally, so that our team was delivering the most. And I got a lot of success from that recipe. And that's the same brand of recipe I would aspire to bring to a role in city council. My goals here would be to, you know, bring as much unity as we can, because, believe it or not, we have way more in common than separates us, and I feel like we don't always recognize that. Support a targeted economic policy that would evolve us more into something that doesn't rely so much on tourism, and be more of a year-round community. Something that has its own urgent care would be nice. Enable and attract new housing development solutions. And in this role, I wouldn't be on the front lines of it, but I would certainly be in favor of anything that comes through that would do that, because we do need more, and I know Overton's a great victory, and can we do it again on the other two Brownfield sites next year and the following year, right? And all of a sudden, we've got, you know, 3% solution. I also am in favor of balanced tourism management, meaning a fair STR policy, which I know we've got a new ordinance, and now we're going to go live with this and see how that goes. But also, the infrastructure to be able to manage the volume that we get when the tourists do come here, those are very important. And I think relationship building, which was really what I excelled at at Ford, whether it was engineering, or finance, or whoever it was, technical people, and our supply base, I built really good relationships. And I'd love to be able to do that here with our townships that surround us, as well as the city and the council. So in closing, if you're going to vote, please vote for me on November the 4th. I have been canvassing door-to-door, and I have a flyer that I'm handing out to people with my Facebook.
Give one minute.
Thank you. My Facebook page for my campaign, and there are almost 1,300 registered voters in Ward Three, and so far, I only have 70 followers, so there's work to do here, but we intend to go and do it. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
I look forward to working with you, so thank you very much. Thanks for running.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I can attest to that struggle with Facebook, I am finding something similar. Good evening, Mayor Brown and Council. My name is Joshua Lemmer, 731 Meadow Drive, and I'm running for mayor of South Haven. I'm excited about that, I'm excited to get to know all of you and the community, and become one of the, one of the new people, hopefully. First, I want to start off by thanking the city staff for all they do and the service they provide to South Haven, particular to these meetings. The quality of the materials prepared is helpful, appreciated, and does help us stay meaningfully engaged. One of the many reasons that I'm running for mayor is to help support that very staff. It's clear that our staff is operating at or near capacity. From my seat as a resident, which is not seeing all the inner workings of everything, I want to raise what feels like a disconnect. While the council has accomplished several important things in recent months, I don't always see supportive staff in managing their workload effectively. Too often, energy gets diverted into extended back-and-forth, unnecessary work and rework, process slowdowns that resemble micromanagement more than governance. It's not a critique of the work being done, it's just a reminder that council's role is to set clear priorities, empower the city manager to lead the team, and stay focused on the bigger picture. I think we all benefit from realigning to that balance. Another reflection relates to board and commission appointments. I'm glad that this topic returned to the agenda tonight, I know it had to, especially after last month's meeting, which felt rushed and left little room for discussion. While that may be a common way of proceeding, it came across more like a race to get motions passed versus a thoughtful process for selecting who's best suited to serve. These roles really matter, we all know this, they really matter, they shape the direction of our community, a more transparent and intentional approach, one that allows time for reflection, deeper consideration would help ensure we're tapping into the full range of talent and ideas in South Haven. Lastly, I'd like to encourage us to keep thinking about how the council communicates and works through complex changes, like tonight's signing discussion. We have complex situations, it's a great town, it's a great town, but there's complex situations. Last-minute information, last-minute amendments, fighting against our appointed boards and commissions and experts don't help the council effectively work through the situations, but that seems to keep happening. I think the city residents are tired of this routine. It's a great town, I've lived all over, I grew up in Bloomingdale, I went to college on the east side of the state, lived in northeast Missouri, a very small town, moved from there to downtown Chicago, and then over to Minneapolis, and now here in South Haven as of 2023. I'm excited to be involved, excited to run for mayor, and excited to be a, quote, "new person to serve." I bring a fresh perspective, strong problem-solving skills, deep commitment to this community. I'll be hosting a casual meet and greet this Thursday from 4:00 to 5:00 at Stanley Johnson Memorial Park. It's open to anyone who wants to stop by, meet my family, and probably fall in love with our almost-five-month-old, who is so cute. So thanks again for the opportunity to speak, and for the work that each of you do on behalf of South Haven.
Thank you.
Kent Brindley, 345 Bailey Avenue, Ward Two. This is not my campaign stump speech yet, don't worry. All right, this does circle back to the, the appointees of the city council and the boards and the boards and commissions, and I want to congratulate everybody who was appointed. This does circle back to the last meeting a couple weeks ago. When councilperson Hosley mentioned younger voices, we, everyone knows she meant newer and, newer and fresher perspectives by younger voices, not literally generationally younger. And I think we can all appreciate that. There, there needs to be some, this, these are heated political times with a lot of divisive rhetoric, and we all need to, to do better in communicating with one another and with our communities. Thank you. And that does include me, and I am trying to, I'm trying to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just want to piggyback on what he just said. For full transparency, I came up here about, about four or five months ago to address an issue with a comment that was made on planning. I spent several meetings addressing this board, I believe I've been to planning once, if I'm correct. I met two weeks ago with the person in question, requesting some form of an official apology, whether it was written, or whether it was done on the board in which the comment was made. I personally don't care who supported him. If he offends one, I think was worth saying I'm sorry. So I don't care what African-American person said on the board, said it was okay, I say that it offended me and it offended others. But I've gotten to the point, after meeting with him, and he brought up a point whether or not I offended the young lady in question. I said, if I offended her, I would stand before this council, and I would be willing to say, I'm sorry. It was not my intention to bring any harm to the young lady that used the word, and if I offended her, I'm godly sorry, because I'm not here to try to offend or to keep this divisive rhetoric or narrative going in our city. It's just too divisive, I see it on Facebook, I don't want to address it, being called out of my name, all that kind of crazy stuff, Facebook bullies. I don't, it doesn't bother me. It bothers some, doesn't bother me. I don't think it's good for our community. So I'm here to apologize to the young lady. I threw that same proposal out to the chairman, and he refused to stand before his board or this board to say he was sorry to those that he offended by bringing up there and eroning his history. So at this point, I've had people ask me, well, what are you going to do from this point of forward? I'm not going to address it anymore. You can't make a person change his behavior, you can't force him. He either has to have it in his heart to want to do what's right and do what's best for the community, he has to have it in his own heart, he has to reach down and, and not make this be about his ego, but willing to say, okay, for the betterment of our community, I'm going to apologize. He chose not to. So full transparency, I want to put it out there, because I'm not going to address it again, because at some point, it becomes counterproductive, and then I'm viewed in a way of trying to bring divisiveness to the city, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to just keep on dragging this down, which I, at one point, intended on standing before this council each meeting, but I'm not. But in full transparency, I want this council to know that I'm at the point of, I am apologizing to that young lady if I offended her. If she's watching, I want her to know that. But I also want to know, I want those in this community to know that if we continue to allow all this negative stuff to be spewed out over Facebook, and all this nasty stuff, eventually is going to wear on this community. We're going to pull each other down. And so I'm going to ask everyone in this election season to try to rise above all this negative, false crap and do what's right for this community. But I will, I'm going to end on this, I am a little disappointed with this council and the way that you all addressed that issue. I think you said a president in this city that negative comments, erroneous comments, nasty comments, degrading comments, demeaning comments will be accepted as long as you have knowledge on the board you sit on. And to me, you said it today, education should not matter. His knowledge on council, which I gave him credit for, should not matter, it's how we treat each other should matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a retired teacher, so have to have a little visual aid. I also am running for city council, Ward One. Our councilperson, Reeser, is term limited, and I would be honored to take his spot and represent the voters and residents in Ward One. One of the things I'm doing as part of my campaigning is I am sharing with people and enlightening them about the fact that we have a short-term rental hotline. I want to thank city staff for putting that on the newsroom, as I had requested in the last time when I showed this. It is a very, very, I really do appreciate that, it's the last page on the, on the newsroom. But if you open up the newsroom and stroke or swipe right, you will get to it directly. you will get to it directly. So, the things that are on this visual are... It's not as cute as this. This is buried deep in the website. But the information is on there, the numbers you need and that type of thing. The short-term rental hotline number is... It's on here. This is a very, very good tool. You can register a complaint confidentially, either by phone call or by the... There's a click here where you can register a complaint online. And the complaint goes to the manager of the property. The local property manager gets the report, and within 45 minutes, they are supposed to contact the short-term rental and let them know there's an issue and to correct it. If that is not done, you can have the option of having... Getting a call back from the short-term rental hotline service, and they will let you know that if the problem has not been corrected, to then reach out to dispatch in the dispatch number in Paw Paw. That number is 269-657-3101. And all those... Any requests do have to go through dispatch as opposed to going through the South Haven Police Department. So, this tool is very effective. It's confidential, and you are not identified... You have to give a name. You cannot do an anonymous report, anonymous complaint. You have to give your name, but it is never revealed to the owner or the property manager where the complaint originated. I think that's it. If you want more information, please look on the newsroom and find that where it says the short-term rental STR hotline. And I really do appreciate, again, having this posted on the newsroom so residents can access it easily. And I would encourage people, if you have the need, to please use the service. It is really effective, and we are very fortunate to have it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Capps. I'm at 235 Bailey. I'm running for Ward 2, City Council. Usually, I haven't... I've never run for an office before, so I appreciate everything you guys have done. My family is fifth-generation South Havenites. I was born here. My folks were born here. My grandparents moved here from Illinois, and the great-grandparents also had moved here. My kids work here, both of them in South Haven. My wife works in South Haven. And so, I've been a business owner a couple of times. My brother and I own Maple Grove Tavern, and we were together about 17 years. And if you can get along with family for 17 years, you've done something. But at some point, we decided, hey, it was time. And then I went into the food service business because I had some knowledge with cooking and things like that. So, I worked for a small company, Stan's Food Service, out of South Bend, Indiana. My area was the southwest, along the lakeshore. My first year, I was Rookie of the Year as a salesman. And if you know anything about sales, you got to make three people happy: me happy to make some money, the owner of the business, and whoever you sell it to. And I've done the same thing at Walt C. Cards for 13 years, and Walt's been nice enough to let me kind of semi-retire. I'm working three days a week there. One of my greatest supports is my wife. She helps a lot, although she wouldn't come to a council meeting, but she said, "Go ahead and have a good time." OK? Some of the things I would like to address, I hope, if I'm lucky enough to get elected, is that we have jobs, and we know we need jobs in South Haven. One of the priorities should be keep the ones that we have. We are a tourist town, and we need to encourage that. Not that we don't want more, not due to one industry, but South Haven is a great place. The beaches are wonderful. My wife and I unfortunately had travel problems here about three weeks ago, and we spent the night in Detroit. And the first brochure I pull up is South Haven. What a wonderful beach and a place to come. And we should make all our tourists that come here feel welcome. I live in a neighborhood. I have short-term rentals there, all over. They're wonderful, most of the people that are there. I've lived there seven years, never had a complaint. I see a grandmother, a mom, and kids in a stroller, and they wave and say, "Hi, can we pet your dog?" So, I think we should watch sometimes what we do. It seems like... And I have no personal agenda. Sometimes, it seems like we've waged a little war against short-term rentals. And those jobs here, they employ the... Everywhere from the realtors to the management companies, to the people that clean the houses, the lawn care. So, we have to realize that if we try to collapse that industry, there's a lot of jobs that can be lost. And a lot of people that work at those jobs are single moms trying to make a living. So, just remember, when everything you try to do sometimes has a consequence that might not be the best. Also, if I happen to get lucky enough to get voted, I would like to make sure we have no surprises. I think surprises don't help anybody here. And I agree with some of these other guys that are running for council that we appoint people to your committees. If they work hard and then come back with a decision, we should go with their decision. If we had a problem with an amendment, do the amendment there. Don't do it here. I hear that out everywhere. Everybody watches this to say, what's going to happen next? We don't need that. We need to be welcome. And we have to know that with housing, you know, we had the project over there that you guys sold the property to. We had one person bid on it. I talked to an individual, said there's probably 12...
Give one minute.
There's probably 12 companies that do that. And while we had one bid, it tells you something about what they think of how we've handled things. So, I think we need to do a better job. And I hope all those people out there watching will vote for me. I'd like to try to help you guys. You're all great. I have nothing against anybody, but I'd like to make South Haven better.
Thank you so much.
Clark Gruber, 305 Erie. Hopefully, all the candidates had a chance to speak. It was great to see everybody out here. Hopefully, it sounds like tonight's meeting didn't scare them off. Two other items. One, and I want to remind everybody that every member of the Planning Commission is a resident. So, if you want to hear from residents, planning commissioners are residents, too. And lastly, tonight, we heard the word thoroughly. It's got three syllables. And when it was said tonight multiple times, there was an accent on each one of those syllables. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we're moving on to city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. We have secured our permits to do the dredge work at the mouth of the harbor. The museum has also secured their permits, and I understand that Perils will be likely mobilizing soon. We also are working on a few items. I know that we've got a few people who are looking for some staff time, but today, we held a meeting with some neighbors regarding 120 Baseline Road and just heard their concerns out there. There is a demolition of the former Countryside Nursing Home that is taking place. There have been some other things that were taking place out there, but we have been meeting... We met with the neighbors today and are just trying to keep people informed. I was very pleased to see the South Haven Community Area Foundations give out nearly $219,000. That's amazing. That's a great generosity for our community and all those nonprofits really assist with bringing more... You know, bringing to the fabric of this community more options. Lastly, we'll be bringing back the signed ordinance at our 7/7 meeting, and I hope to have an update on the lifeguard program at our next meeting. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Questions? Oh, questions.
Kate, could you mention about the June 9th meeting at 4:00 PM about the EPA grant for people?
Yes, that's up on our website, I believe. The LEFA... I'm sorry, the Brownfield will be holding an open house with Fishbeck and our city staff. This is to learn about the EPA Assessment Grant that the city has received last year and how to utilize those tools. So, in this room, July 9th... I'm sorry, yeah, July 9th. Sorry, June 9th, thank you. June 9th. It's up on the website, just in case I got it wrong. So, June 9th, here in this room, 4 o'clock, I believe.
And are you... We... Have you been able to do... Get closure on a policy procedure for Emily and life rings?
We have staff looking into that. We do have it, I think, down at the beach. We're waiting for the steel box that's supposed to be coming, but it is down at the beach shed right now, being charged, I believe.
And policy procedure about who would use it? I thought you had mentioned something to that effect.
Well, it will be for staff. I don't think that we're going to have it out on the... Out there for the general public to use.
OK. And I wanted to thank you for setting up the time. Councilman Sleeper and I met with Double Hall Solutions, had a very, I think, productive discussion, and I'm looking forward to that and was very excited that they said they would come with options for us to discuss as opposed to one-size-fits-all. And thank you for that meeting today. I think that was very productive, and it helped residents understand what was going on. One thing I noticed, not related to that, but from the 4/25, I was looking at the zoning ordinance, and we had our amendment where it removed the short-term rentals, but I haven't seen the ordinance actually updated online.
OK.
Will that be happening?
Yes. Yeah, I think so. I know we have a number of other things that have to be updated, so...
OK, thanks.
Any other questions for Kate? Letitia.
Well, first, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and to all the candidates that are running. Good luck to you. I also wanted to say thank you to the handsome guy that came up and talked. And he was humble enough to apologize to the young lady, and that's Bishop Wilkins, just in case you didn't know who I was talking about. I appreciate him taking down to apologize to the young lady who felt offended. And I think that's what this community is about. It's not always about your feelings. If you offend... If someone feels offended, it doesn't take anything from you to apologize. And so, my next statement is to... I've had people talk... Ask me questions about the chairman of the planning, which we all know is Tim. And there have been people who have... Kate, who've asked for him to be removed. I don't know anything about how to remove him. I know we cannot make him apologize, which is very unfortunate, but there are people in the community who have asked if he could be removed because they feel that he is not representing what a leader should be. So, that's my statement. And I'm moving on to... I heard a comment tonight, and I wanted to know because when I was voted on as a city councilperson, I represent Ward 1. And I was told some time ago that everyone up here on city council represents the city and basically that we're supposed to kind of like run the city. So, at what time is planning supposed to give us direction? And so, that's my question to you because I'm starting to feel like the people feel like planning is giving us direction or they're telling us what to do. And I thought that it was OK if they sent us something and we didn't agree, that it's OK for us to say, well, no, we don't agree with it. We want to send it back. So, can you kind of like help me with that? Because I'm getting a little confused. Is planning running the city council, or is city council supposed to give direction to planning?
So, it's... In my mind, it goes both ways, but the Planning Commission has a statutory duty to review zoning ordinance changes, the master plan, things like that. They can make recommendations, and they do. This board can override the Planning Commission, but there are times when it sometimes has to go back to them if this council wants to overrule them. I'm speaking in very high-end generalities, but ultimately, this city council has their duties to pass the laws and the ordinances that they think are pertinent. I mean, that's your elected duties. And if you don't believe the Planning Commission is correct, you can override that. But they are the statutory... They have statutory roles and responsibilities as well, and they have to do their reviews. And sometimes, they are not the city council's policies. They are doing their own review that by statute, they must. So, if this council doesn't like the recommendation, they can override it. But there may be times when you have to send it back to Planning Commission for another review.
OK. And I understand that the... And I heard George say that they work hard. And I feel like that we work pretty hard up here. We're volunteering our time. And there are times that we're all tired. And I think that a lot of times, it goes unnoticed. And, you know, sometimes, I think we feel a little undervalued up here because it just feels like what we're doing, it doesn't seem to matter. And it's not to everyone, but it just seems like to some people, it doesn't matter. Like, for example, I'm not an attorney, but I enjoy listening to, you know, the different ones up here who are because they give a different perspective on things, and they see things that, you know, I don't see. So, I don't think that I should come across insulting to someone just because they're an attorney. OK, I'm just a teacher, but I am valued. I'm still somebody because I'm a teacher. The students love me, and that's just who I am. And I value what councilwoman Hosley brings to this council. And I think we all bring something different, and I think it's OK to be different. And I know there's a lot of nasty things being said in the community and on social media, which is so sad that we have gotten to that. And another thing, to the person that's still sending me those nasty text messages, it's really shameful. It's disheartening for me. I've been here 55 years, which is all of my life, and someone is sending me nasty text messages constantly. And I know I'm not the only one, but that's bothersome. So, all of this is because of short-term rental or, you know, what I think. I'm only one person. And I think that I have a right to feel the way I want to feel, say what I want to say, and vote how I want to vote without someone attacking me. Think that's right? I don't... I'm not attacking anyone. I'm not attacking the city manager. I'm not attacking the lawyer. I may not agree, but I'm not attacking anyone. And I think that that's not right. So, to the person that's, you know, sending those nasty text messages constantly, I think shame on you because I know it's someone that's watching this that's from here. And I think that it's very sad. But it does not represent us as South Haven residents because everyone is not like that. For the most part, I think the South Haven residents are very loving and very caring people. And unfortunately, we have some people that are very nasty. And though... Oh, my last comment. Thank you to the South Haven Area Community Foundation for the awards that they gave out to the different foundations. I thought that was beautiful. Those are my comments for tonight. Sorry it was so long.
George.
So, piling on with that. So, in this meeting, there were a couple of examples of the South Haven community and why our community is as great as it is. The first example, of course, is the Community Foundation, which Letitia mentioned, the great work that they do in cooperation with all of their partners. I mean, two... Over $200,000 in grants is just exceptional. The second example I wanted to mention is all the folks that are volunteering to be on a board or commission. We do appreciate your service. We do listen to what you send us. And that's just two examples where I think our community is great. That's it.
Thank you. Joe.
I'd like to say shout-out to South Haven Area Community Foundation as well. What impressed me is not only what they do, but the total number of people that are involved. This is a small community of less than 4,000. And inevitably, I go places, and I see so many volunteers from We Care all through this community. It's just amazing. And it's also amazing, sitting here, how many people stay to the end of these meetings and listen to all the detail and have comments about it. That leads me into the next thing. I can't tell you, Letitia, how much I respect you. You speak from the heart. You speak from the heart, and I think sometimes that makes a more of an impact on its community than the facts, which brings me to my thoughts. I don't think debating an issue is a waste of time. I don't think having different perspectives up here is a waste of time. I don't think taking information from the Planning Commission, who George calls the experts. I think we up here are just as much of an expert, because as you said, we're all community people on all these boards. So our perspective is just as valid. We wait for the Planning Commission to give us information, and we can take it or not take it. We can absorb it or not absorb it. But I don't think us debating anything up here is a waste of time. Tonight, I was gonna vote no on one issue about the signs. It is our city attorney that convinced me otherwise, plus some other comments. So was that a waste of time? Am I asking him questions? I don't think so. That's how I learned. And maybe I'm not as smart as some people on Planning Commission, George. Maybe I'm not the expert I should be in everything. But I'll tell you what I can do. I can listen, I can learn, and I can vote intelligently. And I think that's true of all of us up here. I also don't think for the community, it's a sign of a weakness for this Planning Commission to debate issues and go back and forth on issues. Yes, I don't like staying till quarter 11 at night. I don't like going home, and, because I don't eat dinner before I come here. So I have my wife heat up the dinner. It's not fun. But I think these discussions, for the most part, are worthwhile. Yes, sometimes they get heated, sometimes that's not productive. For the most part, it is. Now for the Planning Commission. And I'm trying to choose my words very carefully. The person heading the Planning Commission, I don't believe should be making derogatory statements about anyone up here or anyone in the community, and I think that is not productive. I think the Planning Commission, when they're doing their job, gives us the information that helps us make a decision. I can tell you, on the signs, I found it confusing. I found it hard to make a decision. I talked to Kate today. But I will tell you, the Planning Commission, I thought did a good job. Not only did I read what their ordinance they proposed, I read the minutes from that meeting, and as I understood it, there was the same thing that we were doing. They debated among themselves what they wanted. So this wasn't a clear-cut expert's opinion. This was individuals that live in this community, all putting their ideas together and coming up with final plan, which we got, and we ended up supporting it. So that whole process, in my opinion, works. It may be arduous, it may be time-consuming, but I think we have to do it. Last thing, I do think Tim Stegman has hurt this community, has hurt the City Council, and hurt a lot of people. I, too, have thought about how to go about removing him from that position. I did not follow up for two reasons. One, I saw our lawyer, our attorney's comments on how you go about doing it. But more importantly, I don't think it would have served the purpose. I think people have made their comments. He'll be judged for what he said. I'm not gonna try to remove him. He has to live with those statements. And on the other side, I will compliment, because I think he runs a good meeting, and we do get good information from the Planning Commission. So that's my comments.
Mary.
I wanna thank everyone who came tonight and gave comments. I too thank the Community Foundation. They are a great group of people, all volunteer, and the grant committee works feverishly from when the grants are, from the due date until approval. And it's just very rewarding to be a part of that and help our community grow and get things done. I want to give a shout-out to the community and ask you to come out to support the History Club's finalists that head off to national championship competition this coming weekend on Thursday, June 5th, starting at 4:00 PM from the high school. There will be a parade. It's on their Facebook page. You can get it. And they'll be concluding at First Congregation Church. Bring out your noise makers, and let's send these students off to put South Haven on a different map, a history map, because of education is very important. And this year's theme is Rights and Responsibilities. And I was involved helping two students who did a report aboard on Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who fought for equality for everyone. And she's true, dear, true to my heart. Upon retiring, I've done some pro bono work for Legal Aid, representing domestic violence victims and divorce cases. And, you know, I do look at everything from, I look at all the aspects, and it really is a matrix. And I appreciate that the attorney says certain things are just one aspect, but I really try to look at the big picture, take everything into perspective. And I truly appreciate all the people who did come out and acknowledge that my use of the word "young" really was looking at new ideas, new people. It was not as it's been portrayed to be. I was disappointed with how the sequence of events was represented in the social media. As I said, when I said that word, it was Vemis, Kulam, and Runkel who were being discussed. And, you know, we really are obligated to look at all applicants. There really should not be any expectation of reappointment and also just moving from one board to another. We, we encourage people to apply, but if you never get appointed, that encouragement is snuffed out, silenced. And, and that's not the type of leader I want to be. I want to encourage new people to come forward and bring their ideas. That's how we move forward. When there's qualified applicants, as Pat Gaston has said numerous times, those who have been on boards, maybe it's time to take a break and let some new blood come in. They bring different experiences, different interpretations, and we've heard tonight about how different interpretations help guide discussions, and discussions are not wasted. They're productive. And I, and that is extremely important for the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, where we have statutory obligations for looking at responsibilities. And, you know, our, our code of ordinance could actually use some refresh, because the details that are in the state level for Planning Commission are woefully missing from our, our current ordinance. And they could even incorporate in our current ordinance a payment opportunity for Planning Commission members, and I believe ZBA members also. And maybe not a stipend, but at least something that would allow someone to provide for childcare, eldercare, anything that ties them to home that does not let them get out, because they're already volunteering, so let's not make them take money out of their own pocket to volunteer. I would think, I will continue to engage the community members and encourage new applicants. I thank everyone in advance for welcoming change rather than resisting it. I think that's a, a common theme that we're following. And I do want to thank the Garden Club with the, with their donation in the consun agenda. They didn't really get a good shout-out, so thank you for that great donation for beautifying Elkenberg Park. Great job to Erin and everybody for making our cemetery just absolutely fantastic for the Memorial Day Parade. And I need to echo the statements from Councilwoman Wilkins and Councilman Reeser with regard to the Planning Commission, twofold. Yes, they make recommendations, but that is what they perceived, and the City Council is the policy-setting entity. And if what they're putting forward for policy is not meeting with the majority of City Council believes should be the policy, City Council should have the courage to say, "This is not right. We're, thank you for your efforts, but, you know, let's, let's, let's try to do this again." And more importantly, I think leadership qualities, and I think Bishop Wilkins has said this before, is compassion and the ability to apologize. And I would be remiss if I, so as I had said, my word was not intended to harm anyone. It really was taken out of context, but if someone was offended, I am sorry. That was not intended. People on Planning Commission know, if I believe I've done something wrong, I will apologize. And I believe that the Chair should have similar leadership, and I would encourage him. Again, I've already tried that once, to which the response was, lacked leadership, put it that way. And I do want to try and unite us, and discussion does not mean lack of unity. Discussion means trying to find the right path. And with that, I will say, "Go Rams!" for the History Club this coming weekend in, at Nationals.
Jeff.
Thanks to everyone that came and their comments tonight. Thank you to the South Haven Area Community Foundation, and congratulations to the people that received those grants. Pretty exciting having the candidates here tonight. A really good pool of people running. That is great. And to Mr. Capes, my wife won't come either, and she really misses the olive burger. And then on a serious note, sad that I have to make this comment, and not that Letitia needs it. She's a very strong person, but I'm sorry that you're being harassed about, with these texts. That's terrible, and I'm sure it has an effect on your family, and, but again, I know you're stronger than me and can handle it, you know? So, but that's, that's awful. That shouldn't happen. Those are my comments.
Thank you. And you're not just a teacher.
Oh, yeah. I'm saying.
I also wanna thank the Garden Club. They gave, I think they gave thousands of dollars for this improvement problem, improvement project. So I'm excited to see it, and I've seen the, what it's going to look like. So thank you so much for your generosity. That is amazing. Also, I want to, oh, I'm also excited about the grant for $1,740,000 for dredging and maintenance that was secured by Representative Heizenga. And this is also an example of how well and how successfully Kate Hosier works with multiple levels of government. So thank you for that, too. And those are all my comments. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.